Did you actually be?
I was.
I don't know.
Right, right. And sometimes we'll have to add our own.
They call it.
Yeah, we are. Let's go. I know the ones.
Hey, right on time.
I'm there. You're not gonna come right here? There's room for you.
Hi, I would like to welcome everybody to the G twenty twenty four. Save Idaho Springs Work Session. We have five items on the work session tonight. And I would like to start out by welcoming Amy Saxton. Please come on up. We're going to talk about the ROMP, the Recreation and Outdoor Master Plan.
Great, thank you so much. Thanks for welcoming me tonight. I know Jonathan talked a little bit, I think it was a couple, three or four weeks ago now, and talked a little bit about it. So I'm glad that I got a little preview, or you got a little preview. Um, I want to just, I'll try to go fast so that we can get the information. I'm going to present to you a little bit about the plan itself so that you can hear a little bit of what's in this, this plan. Then we can talk a little bit about what it would mean if Idaho Springs decided to adopt this plan. And then that can be for another conversation. It's a work session. So the, uh, and so Jonathan, you can drag this slide. Okay, so the recreation plan was a, um, it was an eighteen month process and we worked collaboratively with across multiple stakeholders and developed this plan to try to get our, build an aligned vision for recreation, which managing recreation is something that we all need to do, right? It's one of the biggest forces in our community. It affects people's day to day lives. It affects traffic. It affects almost everything we do, one way or another. Um, so recreation management is the task at hand for this, for this plan. What recreation management needs, according to the way we were defining it in this plan, is that it is for these purposes, it's the process of managing visitation in outdoor spaces, primarily on public lands. And we're trying to do it in a way that balances and preserves the land, wildlife, and also community and strengthens community. Because ideally, recreation taking place in our community would be an asset, not just a threat. And I think that's something we can strive for. So we spent about eighteen months on this plan. We utilized, um, we engaged the DOC C extensively in this plan. We started with a research phase that lasted for about four months that included some surveys and gathering together all the different reports and data that had been out there floating around. Uh, and then we used three stakeholder groups. One group called the Inter-Agency Team, which was the policymakers and government entities like CPW, the Forest Service, the Four Towns. Uh, and then we had a different, another group called the Planning Partners Team, which was twenty-five to forty people, depending on the day. And that was user management, user experts, I'm sorry, user representative groups, rafting companies, business entities, various stakeholders and subject matter experts. And then we had a community advisory team, which basically certain is a sitting focus group. And then we reached out to community also through surveys and social media and, um, through an open house. And by doing all of that, we arrived at this vision, which focuses on the balance of the need for recreation that enriches local communities, but also protects the natural resources. Oopsie. Can you keep that up with me, John?
Yes.
Okay. Um, we're on the goals slide now. So, uh, so we came up with six goals that the community and the participants in this project identified as being really important. We wanted to enter and preserve the integrity of natural and cultural resources. We identified and recognized that people value our culture and quality of life for residents. People recognize that we have a valuable economy and recreation plays an important role in it, that there's a broad wide variety of recreation that takes place here and that that's desirable and should be accessible. Um, that we should have amenities that can reduce conflict, either by design or by the way they're managed. And that we also want to figure out how to make sure that we can prepare visitors to recreate here responsibly and safely. So we structured this report around five basic components. We have, um, as a foundation, a basic principle that around conservation and sustainability. Those were themes that came out again and again throughout the conversations, no matter what we were talking about. So that is an overarching management principle, or they, conservation and sustainability. Uh, and then we identified four basic priorities, trails, creek, visitor and destination management, and recreation economy planning. And we also identified a management framework called adaptive management. So I'm going to talk a little bit and give a little bit of detail around each of the principles. Um, the conservation and sustainability principle. The most notable thing about that, other than kind of the obvious things about the importance of those two forces, is that we focused part of our practice on that area around the way we manage investing resources and also developed, um, a list of principles around contributing sustainability for when we identify new, when we're building new amenities. One of the things that the community advisory team in particular really wanted to emphasize was that we should not be building new things until we can make sure we can take care of what's existing. That was a really big comment over and over from those of our community advisory groups. On the recreation, on the first management priority around trail systems, this was the biggest priority area that was mentioned and that that means that everybody will always important. And that really was broken out into three, almost individual priorities of their own. The three are doing a trail system analysis and evaluating trails overall. How do they connect? Are they, are they, are they providing what's needed? Are trailheads near towns? Are they not near towns? Are we, are we doing what, are the trailhead system providing a benefit to our community? How is it strengthening us? The second one is evaluating high use areas, places where there's conflict and heavy impact. A third one is developing user specific management plans. The topics that came, one of the topics that came, one of the topics that came up is around O H Vs. Road cyclists is another area that could probably use some management planning and better signage and wayfinding and things like that to help people. Um, the second priority area was the river access and recreation. That's one of the areas that Idaho Springs and Thirteenth County are probably the biggest stakeholders in that particular project around rafting and how managing that program and the usage of the creek. I've a lot, we've all had it stated there, there's a lot of opportunities for improving that and potentially growing more revenue and more resources and more ability to make that management, give us more management resources and improve the management of that program. Um, so those first two priorities are really focused on land management. The second two priorities are a little bit more visitor management and that kind of managing the way recreation flows into our community. Uh, so this is our third priority is around destination and visitor management. These are focused on responsible tourism and things like how we can utilize transportation in recreation management. Uh, wayfinding would fall into this category as well. And the fourth category, the fourth priority is around recreation economy planning. This is a little tiny bit of a catch-all priority, but one of the things that we talked about a lot was the, um, just kind of managing the force of the recreation economy and how it, how to be ahead of it as a community, how we can make sure it's serving our, our, our interests and that the quality of life issue is, is something that we are, we have the reins of, that it is something that, um, uh, that isn't running roughshod over us, you know, that is something we're ahead of. And the way we were thinking about it was around recreation economy planning, making sure that as plans come in, we're all sort of singing from the same songbook on how, how this works. And a couple of these examples are looking at what, what are some examples or models that are out there where we can balance local and tourist culture? Or that, that is something we could, that, that we, that we could use as a model? Um, and how can we have systems where we can evaluate recreational opportunities for their ability to contribute to the ecology and to socioeconomic stability? So those are the four priorities. Um, and then using an adaptive management framework. This is a pretty common framework. It's a planning management, it's a planning framework and also a management framework that we will use and apply to the projects as we go through and start to implement them. So next step, that's where we can talk a little bit more about how this might apply to this meeting and what Idaho Springs could consider. Um, all of these, uh, all really six of these priorities and all of the topics we decided to tackle in the ROMP process were those that really needed and could benefit from cross jurisdictional collaboration. Um, the rafting topic, working at high use, trying to improve high use sites, there are places that need forest service input. Rafting, Idaho Springs and Thirteenth County can collaborate. Um, doing a system-wide trails analysis is something where we're going to be touching all sorts of different land managers and figuring out how to make that trail system something that, that works for us all in a little bit more collaborative way. Um, so that was something that, uh, that was why all of these priorities kind of floated to the top in, in the ROMP process. Um, so, but now what do we do with these, with these priorities, right? So one of the goals of having an aligned vision is for, if each entity is doing independent work, when each entity does independent work, not if. Um, in theory, they would have these six priorities, four, four priorities, three trails ones and, um, six, uh, to be as a guide, to be something that we're all sort of working towards. And since that we might all agree on these priorities, it might be something that would help us, um, get a little bit more out of all of our resources if we're all choosing the same six priorities. It might mean we are all advancing the same things a little bit more effectively and efficiently. Um, the idea of adopting these would, would mean that if they align with what Thirteenth, what Idaho Springs is doing, then you would have the opportunity, there, there's nothing prescriptive about this other than if the priorities are of interest and seem to align for Thirteenth County, I mean, for Idaho Springs, I'm going to probably do that too with the more time while I'm talking. Um, then, uh, then great. There's no, there's nothing prescriptive and it isn't. The strategies that are included in the full ROMP report are examples to elaborate on the, um, the priorities and probably help explain them. Um, the, uh, the commissioners did, uh, the Thirteenth County commissioners did ask staff at the county to start implementing one of these priorities since the commissioners have adopted this, the ROMP, and did so in December of twenty twenty-three. Um, and they have asked staff to start working on managing, on developing a management plan for O H Vs. And, um, so we have started to move that forward and by proposing a planning process for that, that would include across jurisdictional collaborative element as well. Um, the group called the Inter-Agency Team has been continuing to meet and, um, has been having discussions on what I'm done with them since on that. So. That is all I have.
It should make sense to me to collaborate, I'll give an easy one, if there were two more acting companies that said they wanted to put in on Clark Creek and take out at CRC Park, just a prime example of, uh, you know, things that we should collaborate on. You know, even our, our trail system, uh, a lot of it ends up going up into trails that are on, uh, county land, could even go into Gilman. But there's every reason to collaborate on this. I mean, I think, uh, you know, council's going to want, uh, similar things where we're concerned about loving something to death, leaving trash behind, uh, fire dangers, things like that.
Mm-hmm. Creek safety.
I'm sorry?
Creek safety, yeah.
Oh, yeah, right.
I guess my, my question, Amy, at least one of them is right now, is, so because our, our trails, I, I mean, the river is actually the most manageable, right? Because we have, they have to have a license to be on our river. Um, the trails that go into national forests and then come out of national forests aren't the county land. I mean, I don't even know how to begin to manage that. Like, to me, that's unmanageable. Like, unless we have somebody at a trailhead, at a parking lot, it's, it's not managed. That's, that's what manage means, somebody is there to manage it. That's not probably going to happen. So what is the point of, of ROMP in those areas of the county versus the ones that we can actually really truly control, which is somewhat the bike park, absolutely the river, and maybe some of the, the, uh, up and down the river, the, the little parks that are, that are popping up up in the river, that are in the county only?
Well, I mean, you're right that the, the Forest Service and county juxtaposition is more challenging. Um, and, but some of the things we've talked about, we, I mean, we don't have any solutions, but there are, it's not impossible, um, through things like controlling, like, for example, like grades and tories, changing the way that maybe the road changes. So you don't, not, and not everybody can drive up there, but we'll have to work more actively with the Forest Service, for example.
Well, I mean, the really, the question is not really whether we want to work with them, is whether functionally they will work with us.
Absolutely.
And, I mean, I haven't heard, I haven't been on any of these boards, but I have heard that it's difficult to get them to cooperate with us, knowing full well that not only are we in a dangerous fire situation if we have a camper that goes off, you know, off the grid, if you will, whatever. Um, but that we have, our resources, our, our emergency resources are being depleted daily by people that are in the back country in places that they absolutely should not be. And so, you know, the county roads, like grazing tories is a prime example, that's one that we can actually manage. I think, you know, the same way we probably manage our, our, our roads to our watershed, if you will, to our reservoir, something like that with a pier or some sort of block.
Yeah.
Um, and I know you guys are doing the same thing at the top of Guanella Pass, too. You're having a reservation system. Isn't there a reservation system for the back of Beard Set?
No, there's not.
Oh.
No, not that I know of.
Be a good step in the right direction, I think.
But I mean, I think your point is well taken that working with the Forest Service is challenging. And that was actually also a big motivator and why we wanted to develop this plan. One of the challenge, one thing that exacerbates the challenge and what the challenge One of the challenge, one thing that exacerbates the challenge and what the challenge in working with the Forest Service. Is sort of calling them up with like a fire that they want, that we want them to help us put out, not a real fire.
Right.
But like, and us having a plan and priorities that we have done, that we created through a. Responsible on purpose process really does help them be better able to work with us and. One of the things that they are open to, or they have talked about as a more feasible way for them to use this plan. Is that since they know this plan and have been involved in helping to prepare it, then they can identify. Projects that they are engaging in, that they know might fit with something that's already in this plan. And then they can uh, better connect with it. They are doing a fair amount of trails evaluation work that. They can then say, how can our trails project add capacity for them? And if they can find ways to do that, that is more feasible and that does create little, little places where there's Velcro.
Seems like they're gonna, they would be able to stick on a plan with, that we already have in place for, we have prioritized as a.
Yeah, yeah. Cause then, then you're not just saying, oh, this makes sense, you're saying.
This is what we want to do, yeah, we're doing this, so we're trying to do this stuff.
And Kate, I have a little tidbit of what I think is good news. Andy and I uh, met with the new uh, district ranger.
Awesome.
And that is a great step in the right direction because I'm just being very, very blunt. I think a lot of people didn't want to make any like meaningful decisions. Because there's a new boss coming and, and folks knew this for, for quite some time. So I think we were kind of left in the lurch.
We, we were, but how long has it been? Is it three years?
Oh, it's been quite a while, but like.
Probably three hundred twenty cycles part of her coming on board, so. And Scott.
So wild.
Got detailed B I's.
So I'm, I'm delighted that she's here. Uh, she seemed uh. Uh, like, you know, she's got a lot of things on her plate right now, but she wanted to meet with us and she knows that. We are disproportionately impacted. Just because uh, this is obviously like one of that eighty, eighty-five percent of all the property in the county. Is, is some form of, of public land. And uh, that really is why people come here is to recreate, you know, and in our, you know, and our, the bulk of our, our tourists want to do some type of recreational. Activities, so, you know, she, she gets it and uh, I, I'm just glad that they, we, we have the. New person at the helm now and, and we've met with her, so I, I actually cautiously optimistic.
Alright, great.
I have a question, how, um, when you say you have various stakeholders, are you working with open space?
Uh, open space is part of the county.
It is part, I'm, I'm not familiar with it, I just, so um, does that include, you say, using what you have? Versus doing something new, does that include opening access to, like, the one I keep thinking of is Shadow Ranch, like you go down to the little bridge. And there's only a certain place that you can go and you've got that whole beautiful space, like. You can only go to a small space to be, are there plans to better utilize that with trails or?
Um, are you allowed the side, like the meadow side versus the creek side?
The creek side more.
The creek side, yes, we are, we are working on developing the creek side, yes. Uh, but that's not directly connected to this, but I mean, that, that's a more of a, that's a county. Um, county is working on that as a project and.
So that open spaces, the county's open space.
The counties, so I mean, I think the um, so the, the county's open space plan. Doesn't necessarily have as much cross jurisdictional uh, dependencies on it, so um. We would be developing plans inspired by the ROM independently, but the cross jurisdictional planning is where. We would have to sit down all together and talk about a trail system analysis, like um, looking at the trail system overall and looking at. How many trailheads do we have that are near cash registers? How many trailheads do we have that are near um, neighborhoods? So that they, that, that a community can actually access the trailhead. And does that mean we should, we should be looking at finding new locations for trailheads? Does that mean? You know, looking at that overall, like at the trail, the trail system as a whole. And um, I mean, I think one of the coolest things that Idaho Springs has done is create an opportunity to access backcountry trails right from town. Uh, V Camp, you know, and that's a super incredible asset. And um, that is, that's really cool. And how about what if that trails, what if V Camp was also connected to, you know, a, a really. Huge trail system that connected to, that connected to all the towns or something. Just thinking like, like that about trail systems and if we looked at it holistically across the county. And, and looking at individual communities and making sure each community had access to parks and trails and um. What, what, what would enhance each community's needs as well.
So is this the ideal future of jurisdictions, the county like takes this by name? And either there's the agency that, or the people who are working on it today, let me kind of. Authority to move things forward, or is it really just everyone's adopting it and then making their own initiative space around it?
Well, that's a fantastic question. I mean, the implementation part is uh, not super defined because. We have not laid all that out yet. These six priorities all will probably look a little different. Implementing the creek plans will probably be, will, will include Idaho Springs and the county. Probably working on a permitting plan for rafting and seeing how we can coordinate that permitting plan if we wanted to do that. That would be a, a conversation that we would have to explore that, what's the feasibility of that, so that, that would look one way. A conversation on high use areas is going to look different and have a different set of stakeholders around that table. The thing is, every single one of these priorities really is cross jurisdictional. Will require working together and collaborating, which makes it hard, you know, and different and challenging and, and means. Uh, and there's not like any formal agreement, you know, no one has said, and, and uh, adopting this, if you were to adopt it, it would be. For you as, as a community, as Idaho Springs, it would not be signing on to some um, commitment to. Say a bunch of other cables, you know, that the coordination on implementing would be uh, totally voluntary and still be um. Something that we would just do out of the goodness of our hearts. If that was something we all agreed to want to do going forward.
Uh, I just want to take the temperature of uh, council, I, I would assume. Everybody's on board with working uh, with the county on uh, areas of mutual interest uh, with this ROM plan. A good example that I was giving with the, you know, the creek, for example. Uh, we could have people be put in in areas that are beyond our control. Yet maybe taken out here at, at CRC Park or some other uh, area of towns, so. Um, I'm saying with, with that as a backdrop, would, would uh, council be interested in working with the county uh, on this?
I think so, I think I'd like to see some more of how you plan to implement this, like in our multi-jurisdictional things, I don't want to say yay if I don't know exactly how. Implementation is going to happen. But I think it's, it's an idea of not, you know, we're all baking, we're all baking six individual cakes versus one big cake, if we can do one big cake.
But I, I have one more follow-up question, so ultimately, the group doesn't have any power to implement any of the priorities. Who has the power to implement the priorities? County commissioners?
Well, there's no joint power, John.
As I say, if we were to adopt it, what it would do is like guide our policymaking when we are looking at decision in like a trails or recreation. Decision, we already participate on the county, well, I, I'm on that one team for the county, so we, I would work on the interagency team essentially. But if we adopted this plan, it could be like one of our guy, our documents, like our comp plan that we use to say, these are like some of the things and maybe this could help. When we redo our comp plan or update our comp plan, however we decide to make that decision, this could play into that so that we build those goals into our work. Now, in, in my presentation, that's what I was trying to show, alignment between our comp plan currently and this plan, because we would just use it as a, like a guiding document essentially.
And, and, so theoretically, I'm all for this, but what I, what I don't like to do is to. Continue to join groups that have absolutely no fundamental purpose. And I, I think, I mean, I've lived here for a few years and we've had a lot of surveys, we've had a lot of groups that have come and gone and. I just don't really personally want to be a part of another one that just is, doesn't have any power, because. Ultimately, it is the county commissioners who are going to say what goes on in the county. On the big projects, the, the river, of course, we all have a buy-in to, and Idaho Springs is probably bigger than most, you know, because we have so much face of it. So I'm, I'm on, I'm on the fence with it, just for the, you know, for the record.
Until more comes out.
Till more comes out, absolutely, and not saying no, I'm not saying yes, I just, I just need to make sure that it's a part of a group that I, I really feel like I can get behind and, and really see some results.
I think you're way too withdrawn, sorry.
You're so blunt, Jeremy.
So by adopting a plan such as this, the county level, the city level, it's, it's not a, an action, it's not the intent. When you start working with Forest Service from federal partners, with a CPW, Colorado, whatever we're doing, right? Having an established plan is adopted baseline and allows that collaboration to happen. Um, it becomes a baseline for the MOUs that suddenly they get written, which is where did the authority come from? It's the MOU that forms the group for the project, for example, we back up to Forest Service on Montana and, and not a good way.
Absolutely.
So if that was something we wanted to manage with the Forest Service for the access. Adopting this puts us in a position where we have a baseline document that that, based off of that project is for. Without the document, which is currently where we've been, even the county part of adoption is, it's a lot of, hey, we would really like to talk about this. We're not totally sure what it looks like, we're not really sure what the direction we're going in, but we talk about it.
That's it.
And that puts us at a, it puts the whole project in a really kind of, installs the entire project. Especially when, when the, when the Forest Service, especially the federal, the federal agency, they're very limited on what they're willing to do. Cross boundary, um, so this is an example of by having, we adopt the same plan that CPW agreed with. Cross boundary might involve, we're going from the federal side to the state side to us. With whatever that project implementation and design is. So that's really where adopting a document such as this, that it fits what we need, which I think it does, after I've read the entire thing twice. Um, it's just kind of the next logical step, but it's not a matter about authority overall, it's about. Where are we basing our future off of, for how we manage recreation? And rafting is probably the biggest impact to all of us. But that's in big picture, that's a small season. We've got people recreating year round right now at a really high level.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we talked about it, I, that's like, we're in your, we're, we're resting one level and pass right down to. That's the reality of, of why we, we would adopt this, it's not really an action. It's not an action document, it's a guiding document, that we base future projects and future project development off of as a group we agree upon. Will we align maybe us, in this case, aligning with the county also gives us a better finish more. We'll use rafting for the example of the permitting, right?
Mm-hmm.
Do we need to improve our rafting permitting process? Probably so, the publisher, you. Bar use fees and some other stuff to do with the initial permitting of the companies, that's twenty years of growth in the industry. Not, not talking about the per, per visitor use fees, of course, that get assessed, that probably need to reconsider too, so all that goes back into. Starts with this and then you go through these projects, uh, how we manage them or how we go after grants, that's the thing. If we're going after grants for, for recreation projects. This is the foundation for those grants and that's why it's really important also.
Alright, cool, great explanation.
Jeremy, thank you, that, that was all. Uh, Janine, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, no, I, I agree with what Jeremy said, I think it's a good foundation for collaboration and that. And how we move forward, being able to collaborate with all the stakeholders and.
Good, good Scott.
Positive.
Alright, uh, does staff need any uh, direction at this point, Jonathan?
Just really quickly, did you want us to do another staff report about what, how we use it internally and what our external participation efforts look like? Just uh, your questions, I could prepare that when we bring this for adoption.
You know, uh, I think that would be very helpful.
I would like that.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you. Uh, any more questions? Alright, well, uh, Amy, thank you so much, I appreciate you coming and spending time with us on.
Thank you so much.
Next up is uh, train coach restoration, uh, please, everybody welcome, come on, come on up to the table.
I'm Mark Grable. This is my coroner, resident of Idaho Springs, and Mel Johnson. Yeah, so my company operates the Georgetown Railroad. We've been privileged to be doing the work under Coach Seventy. And we are super excited about progress on that car, it's really.
It's beautiful.
It's.
Have you seen it?
We went on a, we went on a site tour, was it two weeks ago, last week?
I have a picture on my cell phone.
They are doing a fan.
No one even asked me.
It was an H P R C.
Oh, fine. Get it special.
I'm just gonna walk around and show you.
I'd love to see it, yeah.
This is the outside wall.
So awesome.
This is truly going to be one of the nicest, nicely restored.
Oh my goodness.
That's the, that's the plan that's going to age it.
Oh my goodness.
Wow, all these windows here.
Yeah, right.
All the windows are swapped, they kept the originals and then they matched the etching, so all the windows are, are etched.
You don't have to go too much, if you think about it, just a new one too, but that was great.
Yeah, awesome.
Yeah, that's exciting.
I guess you stop, so. And so Mike is, has expertise that's incredibly rare in the United States, so he's. He's able to rebuild uh, historic coach cars like this and other rolling stock. Phil's been in railroad industry for forty years, was our superintendent and is functioning as the project manager on it. We've, yeah, they, they've certainly put their hearts and souls into it. And we were, and just to give you a little insight. Progress was, was slower and the volunteers did an incredibly great job moving things along. Uh, we did hire a, a very skilled vintage carpenter, who's also very efficient and, and the progress has been pretty amazing.
Awesome. I just wanted to point out, uh, there's going to be an ask tonight, I think it's about two hundred and twelve thousand. Uh, to complete this project. Uh, I don't know if you saw the hourly breakdown, but uh, I thought it was pretty good. Uh, any of you tried to have any kind of professional work done lately, um, we seldom get uh, rates that low on here. And uh, Jonathan was pointing out something uh, pretty interesting, uh, we discussed. About uh, the savings with mobilization, for example, we've been really lucky that this is almost in our backyard. Uh, a lot of other folks would be shipping stuff, uh, you know, parts like this out of state or something that haven't done right. And uh, you know, there's just been a lot of volunteerism and, and I think uh. Uh, for the citizens of Idaho Springs, we've got a lot of bang for our buck. Um, and I, I think Mark's right, this probably will be uh, one of the nicest in the nation. Uh, when it's completed, so.
And Mark, you said, we're probably about two hundred thousand dollars in the budget right now.
When we were first getting together and trying to figure out what this would cost. And we actually found some things that we had to get deeper into than, than we originally anticipated. Most of these restorations that I've seen are in the five fifty to seven fifty or eight hundred thousand. And especially more commonly on those, those higher end things. Um, Mike did just an incredible job of getting volunteers to come up and that saved a huge amount of money. Um, I thank you for your comments about our hourly rate, because we're, we. We're, we're part of your community. I personally am part of your community, because I bought Margie's, they're here and there, I've gone so. We want, we want this to be something for the county, we want something for Idaho Springs. And, and so we're, we intentionally have kept our prices as low as we can on it.
Well, I don't know if this matters, but I love antique shows and like destination travel shows. And while I've never, I've only been on the, the Amtrak from uh, Winter Park to uh, Grand Junction, I keep talking about it. I was like fascinated about how cool this was, but trains are a destination. I was like fascinated about how cool this was, but trains are a destination thing for people. Like they will travel miles and miles and hundreds of miles to go see a train. And this one, I think, when she's debuted. I think she will be an absolute gem for our town, so I'm excited to see the end result.
So with that, we actually, um, from HPRC standpoint, we talked about how to manage this so that it could. Cause it's wood, so it's going to continue to need upkeep and maintenance, it's not just gonna end.
Is it a site in facilities?
Yes, it is a site in facilities. Um, and one of the things we talked about and we we talked to, uh. We've got Mark and Phil about this is that this coach will be able to run. Which means if we could do something, we asked them, I I was like, hey, could you like help us lay some track, maybe make it run a little bit? And they said, yes. So if we ran this every like five years. Like if you ran this every, you know, four years or like a month, this is a destination because both the coach and the the engine. So then you can help upkeep itself.
Mike and I were talking, I was at in Como, Como has a roundhouse. And I was at Como when they actually ran a train for the first time and I think it was seventy-five years or something. This is just like five years ago and they ran this little train and there are people like everywhere watching this little, you know, I could have run beside it, it was so quick. So I can't run anymore, but I could have kept up, but it was adorable and so many people came out to watch it, so I agree, I think.
Well, it would help, it would help maintain, you know, like the cost, not only the interest, but the cost of it, like how to keep this thing up.
And and if I may, you know, I think this is gonna be a situation where it's gonna be really hard to quantify. Because Kate, you're right, uh, a lot of people will go hundreds of miles out of their way or come to this. Just specifically because they're trained buffs and they're like, we see this. Um, so you know, the fact that they had breakfast somewhere and they stopped at the gift shop. Will 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 really, it'll be hard for us to ever put a finger on.
Right, you go now.
But I think that it it will pay dividends.
Right.
Well, it's one of, if you watch during the weekends, it's one of the big drawouts just right now, just the, the.
Exactly.
The engine down here, there, people are always.
And I know we don't have a lot of time to talk about this, but I do think that ultimately there's gonna have to be a discussion of the investment and how to protect it over the.
Course of time. You're right, and that is.
We have some ideas about community events in there too. We need a place for Santa's feet and there's a lot of things I think we can do around that dream that are just really good community things. So I think that's the other piece of it.
All right.
She's earned her keep.
Yeah.
Are there, uh, any questions before we move to the next, uh?
Mark, do you have a ballpark, uh, completion? Just just ballpark. I know, I know, it's a little bit of a moving target when you're working with volunteers and they're running the railroad and all that, so.
Mike, I'll say within a year.
I am hoping by the end of this year.
End of this year?
If everything falls in place, well.
Cause I like to hedge slightly, I think Mike is closer than.
And and which is why we're we're at a point now where, uh, the expensive part's coming down. We've got ninety-eight percent of the woodwork done. So now we're looking at the interior. Seats, you know, reworking and refinishing the entire inside of the coach. We have a contractor to do that. Cause that's that's his specialty, uh, that he's been working, he's had a company doing this twenty years. Uh, and and that's where the cost comes in. We're in the past, it's just been, we need a lot of time and help. Now we need more of us, more, more, more dollars. To do the final completion, make it pretty.
I know at one point there was talk about, uh, bringing the coach back here to do the interior work, but. I think when all is considered, it probably makes sense to to keep it on site and do the interior work there. Is that, is that right? I know we're all anxious to get it back, but I think that that, I I like the way, that's the way it seems to be going now.
Well, and and it's a good place because it's inside.
Right.
We can close the door, well, we won't close the door, but we can keep visitors out while we're doing, uh, the interior stripping and refinishing and so forth. And, uh, they estimated, uh, three to four weeks to do the whole interior.
We did talk about too.
Lot of tedious work.
Like for that, I mean, that time is not that long.
No, it's not, they'll have a crew.
We we may need to have like another work session about this. But with it being in Georgetown right now, when it's completed, it probably would make sense if we want to do a limited run to do it before it moved back to the city.
That's a great idea.
Cause that way we don't have to pay for the transportation costs and, you know, maybe make a deal to start a little maintenance fund for it, like do that. So they, you know, obviously they're doing most of the work of that, but it sounds like from what you guys said, it could run, uh, potentially when it's done. And they would, they would take, you know, there'd be a supervisor on the car and it'd be taken care of in that way. But if we were going to think about that, that's something we should think about before we move it back, cause it'd be a good kind of test of that.
It's costly to move it back and forth for sure, and it's not great for the train, I imagine.
It's risky, you get anything out on the highway, you're running the risk.
Right, loaded and unloaded on the.
We do it every day, I know, but.
Right, I know, so risky.
I think it'd be a great promotion for Idaho Springs. And it also brings the communities together as well.
It will bring, if we do it the way Phil and I have been talking, uh, we can bring people internationally. Because what we would like to do would be to get the other two Colorado Southern cars that we have up there, the Long State Historical Society. Them and do the the few minor things that we would do to get in operation and run a CNS on our own Southern passenger train. The first time since nineteen, late nineteen thirty, and that will attract people from around the world.
Very cool. My my comments as far as as this request for the funding, so it is a little over two hundred thousand. We're we're really closing in. There's still going to be some finish work that comes up, upholstery on the, on the seating and and a few other things. But but we're getting really close with that.
Yeah, and the big bite of course is the the interior refinish and, uh. The companies came up and they gave us an update. The the original, going back to the original cost, the original, uh, proposal was for eighty-four thousand. It's now eighty-nine two. Okay, so that was inflation over the last, you know, four years. Uh, but, uh, they're looking to, uh, schedule it, we're looking to schedule it this summer. Uh, because we have to have a warm atmosphere to do it in and the building is not heated. Okay, so we can't be applying finish and so forth or doing strip work or anything on the wood, uh, when we've got even fall temperatures. So we, you know, we're kind of working in a tight window.
Yeah. Yeah. I just got these this afternoon, which is why I have them, yeah. It's a velour, it's a velour fabric.
This is similar to the one that was there originally.
You have, that's the closest to.
Yeah, that's 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 the right color right there.
Yeah. We have all of the street seats stripped, the, uh, frames are all been repainted and so upholstery, uh. The seat backs and the seat and the benches is next up on that list.
We're missing one seat arm, is that correct or no?
No.
No, well, there was one that needed repair and it's been repaired already, the one that was missing the arm.
Right, the arms, the woodwork has been stripped, we're processing right now to sand and refinish them.
And do we need to acquire a hat rack?
There is one of those legged racks that's missing and we've been looking and looking. The thing is that being a narrow gauge car, it's kind of a smaller version. I found one that is almost exactly the same, except it's too big. It's it's big, so we're we're continuing to look.
American Pickers, they just did this whole pick like a new show that was all railroads, so.
Yeah, oh, I know.
Love that show.
So we're we're looking and the, uh, and the lamps are, the the, uh, lamps are getting a full restoration. They'll be in here sometime later this year, including a fixture. That it enables them to light up with an LED light, cause you really don't wanna be firing up a kerosene. But they will be complete with all the kerosene apparatus, it'll just have a little LED light in there.
And they will look brand new and all that.
They will look brand new.
I don't know if you saw the cost breakdown on the window treatment, uh, the shades, I was shocked. A hundred and some years, no, I wish, uh, yeah, it's pricey, but the company's still in business.
Yes.
And they're the only ones that do a decent job and their decent job is superb.
Yeah, and Mike and Mike is familiar, I am too, with attempting to. Do the the way the shades, it's two different kinds of material that are bond, that are bonded together and then they're attached to the roller. And trying to duplicate that with off the shelf items never turns out right, it just never does. And it doesn't hold up and we all want this to hold up.
All right, uh, anything further from council? Well, thank you very much, I really appreciate the update and, uh, of course, the last thing we want to do is, uh. Put this out in, uh, Mother Nature for the elements to, uh, destroy what has been a, a, a beautiful, uh, completion. So we're gonna try to, uh, have some type of a cover for it, so that it's preserved for decades to come, and that's next up.
We're excited.
I don't wanna have to do this car a third job. For the rest that don't know, I re, I redid the train in eighty-two and eighty-three.
That is funny.
I've seen some of your paper.
Thanks again for that.
Thanks, thanks for doing the work, we appreciate it.
Tim and Chris, please come on up.
Good evening.
Hey, I really liked the, uh. Yeah, that 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 would go well.
We have that, uh, that rendering in our package.
Right, everyone has a, has the graphics and fun, we can refer to that if you're.
I guess we should start with the site plan, um, and a little bit of history to start out. Originally, we were, we were looking at putting the shelter in the exact place that that the, that the locomotive, the car sit at now. Uh, determined that there just isn't enough room, uh, the power lines are gonna be a problem and proximity of the building too. So we started looking at where else can we put this on the site? And, uh, obviously we've got a big side yard to the east. Uh, and the property line basically determined where this was going to be placed. Um, there's an existing, uh, eastman that's twenty feet wide, ten feet either side of the property line, which has to be maintained for the parking lot. For the adjacent building. So, given that, we were placing a curb line ten feet off the property, property line inside your property. And that that determines where this could, this could go and we just basically just took the footprint of what's there now. And rotated it up to where we're showing on the plan. We, we decided to, uh, locate the locomotive, turn it, we're turning the, the, uh, the train a hundred and eighty degrees. So instead of the, the back end of the train near my industry, one of the locomotive and at that end. So basically the geometry, if you look on your section cut through the, through the. And granted, this is all conceptual, so this is, there's nothing cast and cast and sewn yet, but, um. Right now, I think this is about as tight as we can, we can get it, twenty feet wide between, between, uh, columns. And roughly twenty foot bays, so they're they're roughly twenty by twenty bays. Uh, and there was a five degree, uh, rotation between each bay. So, uh, the total width ends up being about thirty-six feet. Um, I don't still think we can make it any tighter than this, uh, we're trying to, it's a good thing it is a narrow gauge. Car because you're, you know, it's very tight. Um, we're looking at a steel, steel frame. Um, we're showing steel tubes right now for the columns, are eight, eight inch by eight inch tubes. And that's probably, you know, we haven't talked to a structural engineer about this yet, but. Uh, chances are this could, those tubes could end up being slightly larger, maybe a ten by ten or a tw- a twelve by twelve tube. Um, and we're at the, on the lower half of the column, we're, we're providing a brick, kind of a wainscove around the column. It really doesn't add any structural capability to the, to the design. Um, it's just my, basically to try and tie the. The shelter into the same look as the building, as the city hall. So Andy, when we, when we started working on this, Andy had talked about the original, um, train station. That's, that's up the road here and so we tried to incorporate that same Eve bracket detail that that building has. Um, and that's, that's the reason for the.
I'm gonna make it look historic, you know, using contemporary materials.
Uh, the roof would be, uh, you have a couple options for the roof. One would be placing a steel, uh, deck on top of, uh. Steel girders or steel pearlins, I guess, uh, in between these, these bays. Um, and then a metal roof on top of that, or if you wanted to go, uh, slightly less expensive route, I think you could use. Like two by six tongue and groove cedar or or duck fur decking. And then you could put shingles on top of that, or you could do a combination of either one.
You'd see the decking on the underside, you know, when you're in shelter.
Right, so it wouldn't necessarily have to be painted or stained, it could just be natural. Um, again, there's, there's, there's concerns that, uh, that this, uh, the proximity of this structure. To this existing building may become an issue. We haven't really looked at the zoning ordinance yet, but. If you look on the site plan, you'll see that we're about thirteen feet eight inches from the corner of the shelter. To the corner of the eve of the, of this building, so. If we have to move this, there, there's a little bit of wiggle room, we could be, this could be slid over slightly. But, uh, we're, you know, even with, this is as tight as we could get it. Um, this is still very close to the building, to this building. So that might require totally fireproof construction. Ten feet? Okay, good, good, then we're good. Um, there's also some other site improvements that we've done. We're showing the, the, the extension of the Clear Creek Greenway along the east side. Of this, we're, we're reconfiguring some of the parking lots. Um, but the lost parking that is, that we're taking out of the east side, we're gonna be relocating that over to the, uh, south end along Seventeenth Avenue. Uh, we're also relocating that, the recognition wall that's out here on the east side yard. And we're just kind of, kind of massaging existing, uh, elements and putting them into new locations to make, work with the scheme that we have. So, that's essentially, uh, major points. Do you have any other, any questions?
I actually think it's gonna protect it a little bit from the direct sunlight, I mean.
Right.
Right, so it's not gonna get direct so, southern sun. My question is, are people still gonna be able to touch it? And I I'm worried about vandalism, I think, a little bit, and so. I was wondering, is there something being thought of for that? I know Mike and I talked about that today too.
Yeah, we talked about like a raised, like, very raised platform.
There is, we're showing a raised platform along the west side.
Yeah, but you can see it within a fence.
Right, we're trying to avoid having a fence just because it just. You know, there's a, there's a train shelter in Alamosa, uh, uh, some of you may have, may be familiar with it.
I've heard about it.
It's, it's much larger scale than this, it's, it's enormous. Uh, it's got a huge sidewalk, like a concrete pad all the way around the train and it's got a, it's got a gate, like a fence all the way around it. So you can go up there and you can look through, but you can't get up and touch the train and.
I think they only open it, you know, on certain occasions. There are, there is a ramp and accessible ramp and there are steps. But I think they only open it, you know, occasionally to the public, so.
Mind, we're gonna have the police station right across the street from this thing.
I feel like that's more of a temptation than anything else.
I get you, I, I know that this stuff has taken a lot of vandalism over the years, we've, uh, we've, the, the. Train itself is a patchwork, uh, the doors have been kicked in several times for the cab. Uh.
Yeah, but we're spending a half million dollars on.
I, I.
A tourism piece, I really wanna.
But you lock it in a cage, I mean, uh, we've already got pushback about, you know, putting a fence around the playground, that's too much like a jail. Are we jailing off our train?
I think we might be able to do some environmental design things too, like to look at ways we can. I I have similar concerns, we've had, you know, one thing is, the, the, um. Georgetown guys had a donation of a bell and I don't think we wanna put that bell anywhere near that train. Cause it's like one of the only ones left, so I think what we've gotta do is look at that a little bit more and just see what we can do with it.
Sure, I I'm not against any of the designs, I'm just thinking, how do we, how do we protect the, uh, the investment that we.
We get a lot of kids climbing on the cab right now and like that, it scares me every time I see.
They climb on the cannon and I yell at the same kids every single day. Apparently I'm not as scary as I used to be. Apparently, I'm not as scary as I used to be.
This is a silly question, but in terms of, we are going to run it every five years or something, or are there things, like, doesn't matter, like the viewing platform, like, move?
I think ideally, that would be an ideal, but honestly, the likelihood of being, I think John was right when he said this is going to probably be its run, when it leaves Georgetown.
We might be able to do it again, like, I think they think we can figure it out.
Yeah.
But that was one of the things, we wanted to design this in such a way that it could be removed for future work, because the engine eventually, no matter what we do, the engine's going to need some work as well, and that needs to get done not in the city, because it has asbestos, and so we need to be thinking about that too, and I think that this design can accommodate that, to pull it out from the front side.
Can I just throw one more thing out there for the mayor? Mayor, who is Harold A. Anderson? And can we rename the park?
And I'm embarrassed to confess, I honestly
He was a county commissioner for Jefferson County, but to my knowledge, he did not live there.
Yeah, I don't know how it came about that Mark was named after him.
Yeah, nineteen fifty-five, he passed away, but he was a county commissioner down there, so I think we have an opportunity for every name.
Now, we will look into that.
Kate, Kate says Kate Carter.
I don't mind, I don't mind.
I think you do need to look into that, man, it's exciting, it had to do with a property donation or something.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It's exciting for us to be able to do that, though, that's for sure.
What we're seeing here was the Kruegers, so what we're seeing right here was the car dealership, this is all the way to the corner with the Greens and the Kruegers.
Really? Now, that would make more sense, we have people that have been here for years and years.
The door here of the delivery stable was at the corner, diagonal at the corner up here with the light pole.
Oh, cool.
I became an oldsmen dealership, I got a picture of it.
That'd be a very cool picture to have inside, yeah.
Jones is like ninety-five, but
So this structure has the over-the-top protection from weather, it's open on the side, how much weather will affect or get to the car?
Weather, yes, from the eve to the corner of the, the lower corner of the cars and the locomotive, it's about a forty-five degree angle, so if the wind is coming at a steeper angle than that, it's going to hit it.
And then it's going to get some UVs to red and angles.
I think it's going to be pretty well protected from the heat. In the morning, you might get degraded by salt spray from the highway too, that was the other problem, so this will protect you a little bit more from that too.
I think there might be some protection being on the east side, it's involved with rolling prevailing winds. So that might help.
Especially with the open on the other front.
More authentic, you know.
I like the reconfiguration of all of this property, I think this is a better use of space. We're adding this huge coach, and it's still, like, there's a bigger top lot.
You guys also have more eyeballs on it that way.
I like that, I like the, that there's better usage of space here.
Does this have to go through anything with the neighbor in property? I mean, is all
I don't believe so, we're maintaining their parking, they haven't lost any parking, and they haven't lost any access to their parking, so there's a wide enough drive aisle to get into the parking spaces, that they shouldn't have any issues. I believe in the conflict that we've had for a while, like on where the parking lot is. Because it's really specifically going to be their space now, so aside from the easement that we have. Yeah, we might need a construction easement just to work in the space, because we will impact his parking, or that, his lot for a short amount of time.
But after that, we wouldn't be using
We wouldn't need a permanent easement, just a construction easement. Mary Jane says she knew Harold Anderson.
Okay.
Also, is there any plan for lighting, are we going to light this at night or anything?
We haven't talked about that.
We haven't discussed that, but certainly
Motion detectors.
You put Christmas lights on it before.
Motion detectors on the camera.
Would interior lights be appropriate?
The LEDs are going to be underneath for shelter.
Yeah, under the roof, you know.
The train's going to light up now too. So if you have a gas necessary for just security. Also, the marker lights on the train light up, in theory, the glass was stolen, but they were set up to light up, so.
Well, it shows it off at night, so.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
I think having a face minor is actually better for it.
It'll be more visible from I-72, you're coming down I-72 from the east, you'll split up at night, that would be I wouldn't light it if I had light.
Oh, that would look cool.
Yeah, that would.
Line the police department.
I wanted to say too, that we did come to the team with a coach. I don't know, six weeks ago, because we wanted to measure it for our site plan.
Yeah.
And, yeah, the work is just beautiful, what we saw, it's just incredible. We got a really nice tour from one of the other, none that worked there.
How did we say him?
Yeah, I was just saying.
Yeah, Austin's the one doing a lot of the woodwork.
Okay.
So this area, this area to the west too is going to maintain the grass area with the trees, or will we changing that area at all?
I think we're going to probably have to remove some trees to the west.
West of the new location for the
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, most of these trees will
It's all reworked.
Yeah, even, you know, it's going to be nice, you have this deck out here, you know, this long elevated that could be kind of nice too, for viewing the train.
You could always enclose it with glass if you had to, for security. Scott, we haven't done a full site plan as far as redevelopment of the park area, we it's kind of a way out of it, and we can fine tune what's actually going into the park, fixtures, features, things of that nature.
This is our first shot, just kind of, we really just want to see if it would fit, and it looks like it does fit, it's a squeeze, but it does fit.
If you like the concept, we'd like to move forward with this plan. Particularly for the shelter, but we wanted to give you the whole layout of what things might ultimately look like, but I think the goal would be, the goal is to get the shelter constructed before the coach comes back. That would be our goal, and as far as getting the locomotive out from underneath and getting the locomotive back in, when they moved the coach where, at its current location, as I recall, they extended the rails to a little bit farther, and I think you could do something similar here where you, and granted, may block the road.
And I'm sorry, Andy, or maybe go up the other way through the top lock.
Could do that, but maybe temporarily extend those rails and flat them there, and just go right up on the back, so I think obviously, one concern about putting shelter up is, okay, you're still going to be able to and I think we can accommodate that.
Right, ultimately, that would come up off Minor Street. And one more thing I would point out, that these twenty-by-twenty bays that we're showing, approximately, we don't have a lot of extra room at the ends, I'd like to see this maybe get stretched a little bit more towards the southwest, because we don't have hardly any overhang at the ends. We're pretty much tight, we're showing it tight at Minor Street, the dotted line indicates the the overhang for the roof, and it's basically at the property line, so the only way to get extended farther would be down southwest, so we'll have to massage it, but it looks like it would fit.
I think maybe there should be like a little bay, a new bay.
It was quite a spectacle when they took the coach out one day. The other thing I might point out related to the layout that's proposed is, I don't think it was mentioned, but just to reinforce it, is the entrance, entry arch feature there at the end of Idaho Mall. One of the things we've heard for a long, long time, is we've got this gem of a park over Water Wheel Park. And a lot of people, it's just not well marked, it's not a really intuitive way to get there, so what this does, basically, at least this proposal, it suggests maybe an entry arch that would maybe announce the way to the train, and Greenway, Water Wheel Park. And then also, it has a curved path that goes from Idaho Mall right into the underpass. So we think that would be a nice layout, and then you have a park area there, it could be a smaller playground, and you know, whatever we like to make it, but we don't have a lot of green space downtown, so we'd like to preserve the green space as much as we can.
I like that, and I think we talked about that, I don't, you know, Water Wheel Park is one of our underutilized downtowns.
Because everybody sees the Water Wheel. Can I get closer, can I get to it?
All right, any questions from council?
So Mayor, is it okay then to move on forward with the design, the next phase of the design, if it says one of those things you want to make sure of this concept?
Lisa, what do you think?
I think so, I like this, I like this whole configuration.
Jane, check. Jane, right, Jeremy, you most got it? All right.
Okay, we'll move forward then.
Thank you so much, that really looks pretty darn nice.
So good.
Yeah, we're staying right here.
All right, I'll kick off the next one here, let me just
Thanks, Andy, yeah, next up is the City Hall interior improvements. And no wonder you're not going to be with us.
Thank you guys.
Thanks guys.
I don't, I buy business here for a reason. You really have your act together. And you've shown it fantastic to work with, you really have it.
Oh, thank you, Mark, I think it's been a good partnership.
It really has, yeah.
For driving here.
I buy business here for a reason.
And Mr. Warner, who I think we follow that probably at Mr. Warner and Shop last thirty years ago nearly. Jim Clark and
I went by Eric back in that day.
Well, yeah, it's probably Jonesy too, yeah, so. Yeah, Jonesy was probably fifty years ago, so.
He could go back to his
He might, hopefully he does, he'll come back with a porch or something, yeah.
All right, the last item here is some interior improvements, and we've talked about this here and there over the years. And we're thinking it's now time to put together a plan, so we brought the Hanes on board to help us with, okay, what can we do to make some improvements to the public area here, the front office, and then the downstairs area. So we just wrapped up the restrooms renovation, and that was designed back in two thousand
Nineteen, I think.
Long time ago, I think maybe even farther back than that, yeah. So we finally got that done, we're getting the exterior rehabilitated, and that was designed probably about the same time, so we're trying to knock off these these improvements to this historic building, and also bring it kind of up to you know, current standards, and try to make it as efficient as it can be. So one area, of course, that's very important, is accessibility, and that was one of the main reasons we did the remodel, the bathrooms that are accessed by the public on this level. But we have other accessibility needs throughout the, throughout the building here, the bathroom downstairs, it's not, it doesn't meet current accessibility standards, yes, it's mainly for staff, but that is something that needs to be done. So there, I made a list of the changes to try to simplify it here. Proposed interior improvements, so I'll start with this room, the most important room. Council chambers, reorienting the existing dais behind us here to provide better access, we are all very familiar with how hard it is to get particularly the mayor is in the middle, and you got the narrow spots on either end, just the way it's designed, so we want to salvage this dais, it's perfectly salvageable, it's a beautiful piece of beautiful fixture, but we think by, and you can see this in the drawings, and I'll let the Hanes speak some of the drawings in a moment. But I just wanted to talk about some of the reasons for why we're doing things. Is to bring the dais out a little bit, reorient it more straight back that way, we think that'll be a better layout, it'll provide more space. While we're doing that, we want to get new chairs. What I am told when I came here over eight years ago is that these bigger chairs were actually bought for the council, but it's quickly realized they were too big to go there, so we got smaller chairs back there, so we'll get chairs that fit and that are comfortable. We want to have maybe computer docking stations, electrical outlets up here, because you all have your your computers, your laptops, so we also, you know, we certainly with John's expertise and agility, we got upgraded very quickly here during the pandemic with our audiovisual and recording capabilities, we think we can take it to the next level, we think maybe more screen, bigger screens. We can do more there, we know that many people watch our meetings, they choose to be hybrid, they want to be involved. And we think that's one of the silver linings of the pandemic, is that now we have the ability to to have people participate, watch and participate if they like virtually, so I think that's here to stay, so I think we do need to make sure that we're up to current standards, and it's a good time to run more cable or do whatever we need to do. We'd like to purchase new chairs, these chairs are very comfortable to sleep on, I slept on them one night. But they're starting to show where, they're starting to split in some upholstery, they're very bulky, they're very hard for staff to move around, so as you all probably know, there are types of chairs that are much easier to stack, to move, to put on a little roller, you can put them in the closet over here. And that way, we're not always storing chairs out here, most of the time, we don't need all these chairs. But we like to have them, so we can have this room to full capacity. So we'd like to get better chairs, we'd like to get the skinny folding tables, so that way, if it needs to be a training-type session or some type of event where you want to have tables, you don't have to have a lot of room, you can have tables and chairs for an event. We would still have a small table over here for materials for the meeting, we'd like to move these cabinets, which were this as well, but we'd like to move those cabinetry to the back wall. We think that will, right now, you can't use one of those swinging doors, and we think it would just be better if we had all of those cabinets at the back of the room, really where they should be. And again, we're salvaging a lot of things, we're talking about, I think very little will have to be done, other than removing them and putting them back in, we're not building new, we're just making a better layout here.
I like that, that we're using them.
We're trying.
No, if they were built for this building
Yes.
By somebody local, in here, I like that.
Yeah, you know, the workshop downtown.
It built, built, built.
He built that too. I think Bill Maher, I just know that somebody's ex-wife named him for why it was in that location. She might be watching, I don't know.
We'd also like to put a doorway back here in this corner that would go into the front office. And the reason for that is, right now, there's only one way in and one way out of the front office. So there's a little bit of a security concern, but there's also some efficiency, because when we have court here, there's no way to get from this room to the office without going through the public area there, so by just simply putting the door back in that corner, we think that would help the circulation, I'm going to speed up a little bit here, because I'm watching the time. We'd also like to the administrator's office on this level, we'd like to take down those walls with the administrator's office downstairs and give the admin staff more space up in this front office here, and we'd also like to add a a little conference room, thank you, a little conference room, which the prosecutor just learned, the prosecutor could use when she's meeting with folks about their cases. The judge is in here, Kelsey's in here on court day, so it's a very, it's very busy, it's only one day a month typically, sometimes two. But again, if we make some changes, I think it'd be a lot more efficient. But again, if we make some changes, I think it'd be a lot more efficient and a lot, ask enable us to carry on the the work of the city without, you know, still carry on court. Um another big change we'd like to make is, at the top of the stairs here, we'd like to bring that half door, make it a full door and bring it this way. So staff from downstairs can get into the front office here and access the copier without coming into the public area. Right now, as everybody knows, you have to come up the stairs, come to the lobby and then go in. And you get to the copier, or Wonder, everybody goes behind Wonder to get to the the our bigger copier printer. Uh so we'd like to make better workstations for our admin staff uh up here. So each would have their own workstation, their own file cabinets. Uh they have a certain amount of privacy. They'd still be able to see the front window and when the public's uh comes to the window. But it would give them better defined working areas. So that's that's a big part of this. Um reconfiguring the service counter out here to meet ADA requirements. So I think many people recognize you you really need public service counters to be two levels. You have your level for folks who aren't mobility challenged, and then you have a a lower one for folks who who may be in wheelchair or have a, you know, some other access accessibility challenges. Uh and of course, new carpeting, paint on the walls here. Uh we'd also like, these are big items, and again, this is just the first concept. But we would like to install pass card ID systems on the doors here. We've talked about that for a long time. We have no fire alarm system here at all. No smoke detectors, no no smoke alarms. Sorry, Jeremy, uh it's not monitored. So, you know, if a fire happened here, it could get, it could be going for a while before it's ever detected.
There, there's no burglar alarm.
No burglar alarm, no pull station, so.
I don't know, maybe you need to be telling everybody this, but. I know, I wouldn't know any of that. We didn't have that thirty years ago. Yeah, it's crazy.
I'd also like us to consider a fire sprinkle system. And at that, Jeremy will tell you, and he'll vouch for this. It's an added expense, but that's the ultimate protection. Because then you keep the fire to its incipient stage, so a fire department can get here, and that's really the best. Automatically push it toward. We talked about that in the past. Um the challenge there, as I I've heard from um or police chiefs, uh from uh staff here is is you you'd have to staff it. That doesn't mean it can't be done, but you have to have someone, you know, monitor, you know, mating the wind or having anyone come through the the arch. They have to, so it's just um more staffing, but that doesn't mean it's not something we shouldn't consider, for sure. And I know that's part of the reason, at one point, uh court was moved up to Clerk Creek County is for that added security. So that's some, security is a big part of this as well, so point well taken. Um downstairs, real quick, because again, I know we're running short, I want to give the Hanes a little bit of time to talk about this. But uh le- less significant changes downstairs, it's just moving some walls around to make it office in that front area. Um uh better aligning the hallway, enclosing that break room, which is really, we'd like to make more of a conference room, another conference room. It's already networked, so we have uh AV capabilities down there. But we just don't have a wall. That's right. You walk through there to get to the other offices. So we'd like to get a wall in there and make that, you know, place where council could could have executive sessions, you could have a smaller meeting, that sort of thing. Uh number of the offices would stay the same. We'd like to put a little kitchenette uh down there, because we really don't have a defined area where staff can can uh, you know, heat things up or um uh, you know, have a refrigerator and that sort of thing. It's just in the hall right now. Um and I think I'm gonna stop there, because I know we're running out of time. But what uh what, can you just walk us through the drawings or any any questions on the drawing? A new janitor closet downstairs. Uh moving our uh our um server room to an exterior wall, which I hear is the best practice.
All right, we moved a copier. We have a copier downstairs in that recess, right next to the janitor's closet. But I don't know, Andy, you pretty much.
It's a better use of space. None of this, none of this is outlandish or crazy ass to me.
It's upgrades that probably should have happened a few years back, so.
Well, you know, the downstairs hasn't been changed since the police department left. And that was two thousand thirteen, a long time ago. So it's laid out for a police department. Um and so with a few changes, I think it'd just be a a better, more workable space. It was designed to have public access in that lower level.
Right.
The uh front room was open to the.
The window is there, yeah.
Admin reception area, but now we don't have that anymore. It's all upstairs in police department. It's gonna have a new offices across the street. So, all right, so I'll I'll open it up, but we wanted to run this concept by you and working with the Hanes and coming up with some better layouts, more efficiencies, and just, again, see if you have any thoughts or comments or uh before we move into our next level of design.
I have, I have several questions that I could have input on, but I don't think there's enough time. But one question that is coming to my mind is during construction, there's going to be disruption.
So we can move. I mean, uh staff can move, right? Is there other places that you guys could be quartered while the construction goes on?
We're mostly mobile now. Like, we can answer the phones from laptops and almost all staff has laptops now. Actually, all staff does have laptops now. So we can work almost anywhere and run the city effectively. It's more like just making sure we have access to the copier and things like that, but I think we could work with P and everything to make it work on that kind of stuff.
But you don't have someone there for public, the public that comes.
I think maybe, you know, maybe we could have, first of all, it could be phased, take the wall down one weekend. Maybe that'd be part of the contract. Is that that wall for the office gets taken down in one weekend, and then you still have that space until you're ready to actually do the work. Maybe you could have a staff, you know, person in this in this room while it's really messed up in that area.
Well, the contractor is gonna tell you how he thinks it should be staged, so I'd have to work with him.
I was wondering if you could just phase it one floor at a time. The lower level is accessible.
That's a good point.
You could move downstairs.
We did that during the pandemic.
And then work on upstairs and then, you know, reverse.
That's a great idea. It's probably very doable.
The upstairs would have to be done first, because you're electric going, everything's coming from downstairs to the upstairs.
And you already have that natural counter down there that might that might change in future.
Yeah, open up for the upstairs downstairs first, so the upstairs would be naturally the first thing to happen.
All right, uh any, oh, if someone didn't already say this, are we gonna have like a temporary place to have meetings? Or are we gonna have it like in constructions or maybe?
Maybe, although I think, you know, the the school, yeah, there there aren't, there's not much in the way of walls and things here. So I don't, I don't want to be a real mess in here. I mean, might not have carpeting down at some point, and the dais might be not fully attached or something.
I know timelines don't match up, but uh if you're looking at the potential lease on a piece of property that has a building that's very usable.
That's true. That's funny, yeah.
All right.
Or you could meet downstairs, you know, when the construction's going on up here.
It's hard to get an audience downstairs, though. We could meet, but you, we need to be accessible to.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you know, HPRC used to meet downstairs.
One of the three meetings I was on for HPRC was that.
Um any questions? Are we going to uh, Samantha's not here, I think, are we gonna discuss the rec district ask? It it was on the work session, Kelly.
Uh yes, I'm sorry, you're right. Can it take a few minutes to do that?
Well, just real quick, uh because I don't think it's gonna be very controversial. We always sponsored Rapid Grass. Does anybody have any, any harbor? And we sponsored that again this year. I I I think it's gone great for the city.
That, my concern is, do we have this, like, they had camping last year. How did that work with the parking? And is there new owner, are there new ownership over there? That, like, are there any challenges that would create problems from last year to this year? Do you guys have any problems?
We think it's gonna be the same way as last year.
So we also contracted two rangers there in the evening hours, not all day, but.
So there's space for people to camp?
Oh, yeah, they've done it many times.
Before COVID, and we tried it last year and we didn't have any issues.
Okay, but uh lastly, there was a hundred dollar ask for the kids' Easter egg hunt. That is a new one. Uh Jonathan, I'm assuming there's a hundred dollars in our community promotions.
Yes, sir.
Uh and I want to know what council thinks.
A hundred bucks, right, just like.
Sponsor the kids' Easter egg hunt.
All right, uh then I would ask uh everybody, uh it's almost seven, let's take five for a comfort break. And we'll see if you're back in about five minutes. Oh, really?
Yeah, that was me. I was like, anyway.
Do you have a video of that going?
Yeah, we have one on.
What I would do though is give a question.
You're sitting in my old seat. I I kinda like that seat better, because you can see the audience directly. On the other hand, because I make so many faces, it's kind of good that I'm not looking at them all the time. Mary Jane was texting. She did know Harold, and he did look there. I'm here. I did not hear about any of this. Oh, 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 I'm sorry. Do you know what I'm talking about? Don't you something about you know, Big Brother? So, you come around the corner at nineteen.
Oh, that one's a different idea. Yeah, that's.
It's, it's not a retaining house.
Yeah.
The way my house is sort of a retaining wall. It's a retaining garden wall. So it's, it was about foot height. Joy's house, it was about that height. It's not this height. But it's, it's everybody's fault, because I'm not gonna lie. If there's big spots of ice, you're gonna drive on it, whether you want to or not. Remember Joy with the retaining wall? She came in and asked you for.
Yeah, yeah, it's a nineteen.
I just noticed it the other day where I was like, oh, yeah.
Okay, yeah, this is. And you can imagine, if it's covered with snow, you're not gonna see it. It's so low.
Reasons about why.
Harold? I want to know.
So I could, we could read it at the end of the meeting.
So I was gonna say, under mayor, uh I'm gonna let you or Kate read this.
I'll just text it to you right now.
I don't mind. I'll, I'll read anything out loud. It's like the skill I have. But I real, I am fascinated with the conversation online. Oh, but they can't, because they can barely reach the child center out.
You know what I'm doing? I am passing on.
I know.
Well, I would like to uh welcome everybody to the uh regular city council meeting for April eighth, twenty twenty four, uh here at the city of Idaho's brains. And we're gonna call it, we're at seven oh eight. Uh welcome, everybody. Uh just because I see several folks in the audience. Um if you haven't already done so, uh if you would like to make public comment, there's a sign up sheet on the counter over here. Uh love to hear from you. If there's something on somebody's mind, you'd like to bring the council. And with that being said, uh I would just like to point out to council that uh I am going to make a last minute uh agenda modification. There is a request that this, the funds have already been approved uh for Scott Wallace, ten thousand dollars Paul Crane has uh on there. Uh and it it should be in everybody's seating position, but just to let you know, that that'll be added to the agenda under the. And it should be in everybody's seating position, but just let you know that that'll be added to the agenda under the administrator.
Okay.
And with that, thank you. And we'll start off with roll call, please.
Scott Penel.
Here.
Lisa Manifol. Here. Kate Collier. Here. Janine Mariani. Here. Jim Clark.
Yeah.
Here. Mayor Proton Jeremy Jones. Mayor Chuck Hunt.
Here. All please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. And we have an agenda before us tonight. I would like to modify the agenda. With the under item sixteen, city administrator will be motioning. For the the funds to Scott Wallace landscaping for the repair of the ADA ramp over at the visitor center. And with that addition, I would like to motion that we approve the agenda as amended. And do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second from Kate. Any further discussion of the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, can you pause briefly? I apologize.
Oh, sure. You bet.
Sammons. Sorry, guys. Sorry, guys.
Please, 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 please.
Sam and Carmen are with us now.
Oh, all right. If we're ready, I would ask, does anyone tonight probably have a conflict of interest? Well, I have two. One would be in the approval of the bills. Uh, I am listed as one of the payees, so I will be recusing myself. Uh, and as we have done with other conflicts in the past, I will be asking for an approval of the bills. Minus the one for Charles Harmon, and then I will be abstaining from the vote. Uh, on the bill that does include myself. And I will be leaving council chambers. Under number fourteen, item B, ordinance number nine. Uh, I will be handing the gavel to Jeremy for that vote. And. With that, I think I'm the only person with a conflict of interest tonight. I would like to move to approval of the minutes. And do I have a motion?
I do too. Oh, I see. I'm going to approve the minutes from March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
Yes, thank you. And do I have a second? Uh, second, Janine, and any discussion of the minutes? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And now for the bills, I would make a motion that we approve the bills to April eighth, twenty twenty four, except for. Of the item with Charles Harmon. And do I have a second? Uh, second from Jeremy. Any discussion of the bills?
So with the payment, because there's the other payments to for the the other property. Fifty six, would this be the annual payment date for both of us for that property?
Yes. Any further questions on the bills? Uh, hearing none, roll call, please.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Lisa Manifol.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Hunt.
Yes. And. Do I have a motion on the bills on well, it is a singular bill.
I'll make a motion that we approve the bill for Chuck Harmon on April eighth, two thousand twenty four.
Roll second. Um, any discussion? No, roll call, please.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Lisa Manifol.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Jeremy Jones.
Yes. All right, tonight I have some public comment. We have anticipated three. And I would like to invite Elizabeth from Chicago Creek up first. If she's present. Now, she is the one, I believe, that submitted a forbearance. And Wonder had a very good explanation for why her letter of forbearance is requesting about an eight hundred dollar. Uh, relief, and this is on the sewer bill portion alone. But that was early on in the billing. And that is why Wonder actually has a higher number as the bills came in at about fourteen forty six. Oh, I'm sorry. It's a fourteen forty one eighty five. And I would like to make a motion as we have done for folks in the past, they do get relief on the sewer portion as we were not treating this water. At for in the amount of fourteen forty one eighty five. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Uh, second from Jeremy and any discussion? Uh, hearing none, no roll call, please.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Lisa Manifol.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Hunt.
Yes. And next up on public comment, Amy Miley, welcome and please come on up.
Hey, guys, I'm gonna just read off. Can you just first just state your name and address? Yeah, so Amy Miley, nineteen oh one Wall Street and fifteen oh six Minor Street. So I'm here in both capacities as a resident and as a business owner. Um, and I think I'm a little bit late to the party. This is in regards to the water bill discrepancies. Um, I really appreciated the letter that went out this week. With the future reconciliation. Uh, I really think it's important that we start auditing the process. We get. We get the information out to business owners on what they're being billed on. And that our meters are being read properly. I did contact Wonder. I got a bill for our private residence. Um, we moved into our house in August. We did not receive a bill. We haven't received a bill, a water bill. Um, I called the city probably, I call Patty probably once a month asking, oh, it's been mailed. It's in the mail. We assigned up for the public. The online billing. Didn't receive a bill. Um, and then literally like one phone call to Wonder this week and we got a bill, or I think it was last week. We got, we got a spreadsheet of what is owed. And then, um, my shop, I mean, my meter is not being read. It, all of my meter readings say zero. So. It feels like the city could be missing out on some money here. And I think business owners also need a better, more clear understanding of what we're paying for and what buildings. So, you know, being charged roughly two hundred and fifty dollars a month for a sink and a toilet. Um, is a little steep. And I had called. I again had called for clarification in the billing to understand why we're being charged what we're being charged. And I was really met with a lot of, um, no answers and a lot of rudeness. And I also hear that that has been rectified as well. So I just really appreciate that, um, we received the bill or the letter in the mail this last week. Stating that you guys are working on clarifying this for everyone. And I think that's all I had to say.
Hey, Amy, thank you. And normally, council doesn't have a back and forth with public comment. It's our time to listen. I would just add that stay tuned because the city is spending a lot of personnel time and money. And bringing us into the twenty first century on meter reading, on very accurate billing, on communication powers. So we get some real time input. Anyways, I I promise it's going to get much better.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Tara, welcome and please come on up.
Fifteen oh six. So, Tara, we're at twenty nine oh five Riverside. And then sixteen twenty Minor, and it's about the same thing. And like Amy said, it seems like even since we started talking about this, a lot of action has happened. Movement has happened. Um, but I am a local business owner. And I'm a tenant. I lease my space. And recently, my landlord, we decided instead of doing a rent increase, we had to start paying for the water. He was like, it'll probably be around three hundred dollars a month or three hundred dollars a billing cycle. And I got my first bill and it was like a little wacky because like some changes had happened or like there was something left over, whatever. So like. That happened. And then my following cycles were all like four ninety five or something. So I was like, oh, my gosh, it's the flower shop. I'm like using for this water, blah, blah, blah. So I made some adjustments. And when you look at my usage, it's all been around a thousand gallons. So it's the same as like a sink and a toilet. It's not high usage. Anyway, it was some of it is between this like the city, the way that it's metered, and some of it is between me and my landlord. Um, because I was paying for the upstairs, biggest use, whatever. It was all just like complicated, a little convoluted and confusing. The city was helpful, but I was just like, what is happening here? So, um, the question for like intention or like reason I'm here and why I'm bringing it to council is the rate. So my building is a my business building is a mixed use building. And as we know, those are really great for cities. Especially cities that have, you know, issues with housing and just even infrastructure. That's like why we have this awesome downtown is because mixed use was a thing. In the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds. But the way that it's built right now is that. Which is weird too, because that the upstairs is vacant. So it's like it has, there's a base rate that's going on the residence, even though there's vacant. So it's there's two base rates happening, right, off of one meter. And then there's also. A percentage rate. So commercial is one percentage rate, outside of city limits is one percentage rate, and then residential in city limits is one. And residential inside city limits is the cheapest, right? Commercial is a little higher and then outside is higher. So the way that it's billed for mixed use building is so if it's a, you know, it's a thousand gallons. The commercial and the residential rate go on top of that. So it's like twice essentially, if that makes sense. So even with the usage, even with the base, like. I don't know. Hopefully that makes sense. But it's in, um, I think that there's a more equitable way to build mixed use. So that's what I'm bringing to city council is that concept with all these changes happening with water, with looking at it. Alright, I'm done. But that's my, my story.
Tara, thank you for taking the time. Uh, you know, I really appreciate folks that put themselves out there for public comment. It's not easy. And in giving up your evening to come in and and discuss these matters with us is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. I think all of you, from what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to make sure we don't have anybody online or anyone else that signed up.
Not online, but we have some for unscheduled.
Oh, okay. All right, and we have somebody from two forty one Gregory. Please come up. And welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
I'm sorry. Yeah, please state your name and address.
My name is Carl Scembry. And I represent Bonanza Land LLC. Office building is two forty one Gregory Street, Blackhawk.
What's your last name one more time?
Uh, Scembry, S C H E M. As in Mary Beams and Boye R I. And am I free to?
Oh, please.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to, we've got this notice regarding a proposed campsite for ADA. Along of a portion of the Dordie Plaza just south of I seventy. My client, Bonanza Land LLC, owns a portion of the Dordie Plaza west of what's proposed. And also few mining claims that have joined. Uh, well, one, the Ebron, but there's the Dispro and the Fule that are in the general area. When I got on board. Five or six years ago, I inherited. A mess over there. Squatters, garbage. I was along the tail end of it. Kind of working a little bit with the sheriff's department on probably removing. A couple of roll offs and garbage. I haven't hyped the property in the last couple of years. People within that area have called me and said, Carl, you need to come over here. We've got. We got all types of, you know, people spluttering, blah, blah, blah. We all have this in the summer in the mountains. Um, I understand that, but we want to try to reduce that. So I don't want to have to deal with it again. This property that my client owns is directly west. And I just want to, I'm not sure where the council is with accepting this this campsite. But I guess we just had concerns about sanitation, number one. We've got concerns about trespassing, number two, liability. Fires, you know, campfires and that type of thing. I can't be certain and I have no idea who in the past, who their employers were that have used that area. As. A place to stay. I just want to make sure that, you know, on the record that. We can eliminate as much liability as possible for my client. And I'm not there, you know, next summer or this fall with roll offs. You know, having to ask my client again to have to pay for, you know, to clean it up. That's my position.
Carl, thank you. I remember that cleanup. It was many thousands of dollars. Uh, and I'm not sure if council approves it or not. Obviously, that that will be up to them. But I just wanted you to know that we have the same. Interests and. And this also would be subject to monitoring it and approval of the fire authority.
Great. Yeah, I I think, you know, certainly the fire chief is number one. We don't want to have fire up here. Sanitation, number two, for us, trespassing, you know. In situations like this, when when things are forced through at least, you know, at the minimum, we request that a surveyor come up and. You know, flag the forest with T posts to let people know that, hey, stay over here, don't come over here. Type of thing. So I, you know, I don't know where we are in the process of the approval on this, but I just did want to, you know, express our concern.
Well, Carl, thank you. And it actually is on the the agenda. I appreciate you coming over from Gilpin County.
Great. Well, thank you for the.
And and Carmen, I I see you had your hand up.
I do, mayor, and and for you, sir, and anyone else who's interested in this particular application. What is on the agenda tonight is the first reading. Uh, oops, let me make sure. Yes. Um, the first reading of the ordinance on this particular CUP and application. There is no. Um, the first reading of the ordinance on this particular CUP and application. There is no public hearing tonight. There will be a public hearing, uh, scheduled, at which time it is appropriate to receive comments um, from interested folks like the gentleman who just spoke. I would ask council that you refrain from commenting anymore on this particular application. We really want to keep, um, all comment, which again, we welcome at the time of public hearing, but we do want to keep all comments, um, and input and evidence and testimony on that application to the scheduled public hearing, which will be April twenty-ninth for all those who are interested.
Carmen, thank you. Uh, keeping us within the guardrails. Appreciate it.
It's all good. Thank you, mayor.
On off the rails at any moment.
All right. Uh, is, does that conclude, uh, public comment?
Yes.
Okay, because I, I didn't have anything else. Uh, there's nobody else online. Then, uh, we don't have anything from the finance officer tonight?
No, no.
All right. Then, uh, we'll move on to ordinance, uh, first reading, uh, number thirteen. Do I have a motion?
Ladies, thank you.
I will move to, um, approve the ordinance number thirteen, series twenty-two-four, an ordinance annexing to the city of Idaho Springs approximately one hundred acres of property within section twenty-five, township three south, range seventy-five, seventy-three, west of the Sixth Principal Meridian in Creed Creek County, Colorado, known as portions of Interstate Highway seventy I seven.
Thank you, Lisa. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second from Scott. Um, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Mayor Chuck Hart.
Yes. Uh, moving to ordinance, uh, number fourteen, uh, do I have a motion?
Thirteen B, sir.
I'm sorry?
Thirteen B.
Thirteen B.
Oh, I'm sorry. That, that actually, it is, uh, thirteen B ordinance number fourteen. Uh, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number fourteen, series twenty-two-four, and ordinance granting a conditional use to permit temporary seasonal employee camping during the twenty-twenty-four rafting season only on certain properties west of the Shelley Quinn Ballfields, also known as part of the Silver Spruce Annexation to the city of Idaho Springs.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, second from Janine. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Cut anybody off. Um, I was, given that we had some comment, um, on this particular, um, issue and the direction or the announcement I just made earlier that the public hearing on this is the, on the twenty-ninth of this month. I just wanted to clarify, not only for, uh, members of council and you, mayor, but, uh, interested members of the public and folks who might be watching us stream, uh, that the adoption of this ordinance on first reading does nothing substantive in terms of approving this particular proposed use or the conditional use permit sought. It merely sets the hearing that will occur at the end of the month. So, um, for those of you, council, who are thinking about that and the way you want to vote on this, again, the vote on the first reading of this ordinance is not, um, expressing any opinion, um, or forecasting what you may vote. Uh, you reserve the right to vote whichever way you like after the hearing is conducted on this matter on the twenty-ninth. Sorry.
All right. Well, thank you.
That clarifies my question.
Okay, good.
We table it then?
Oh, no, no.
No. We have to approve this to get to the hearing.
Mm-hmm.
This sets the stage. Otherwise, it doesn't even go to the hearing, right?
Right.
So if you even, I mean, I, I personally can't make judgment on something until we have the hearing.
Yep, sure.
That, yeah, that's why, we'll see if backwards, maybe, whatever.
A little bit.
Well, yeah. That's politics, Jim.
I have a question if any, um, if any, like, in the first reading with the various conditions, because they've got like seventeen conditions and four sections. Um, if things are added, would we, this process start over again?
No, ma'am.
Amended.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yep. Good question. Uh, with, with any ordinance, really, um, we have the option in between first and second reading to amend that ordinance, um, so long as it appears in the packet. Um, if it's amended between the meetings and so long as any amendments are made on the record, if it happens during the meeting, that can absolutely happen. Amendments can be made on second.
All right.
So amendments cannot be made today, but they would be on second reading?
Correct.
So there, there's no real discussion on this currently, right?
Correct.
All right?
Please, please.
Never mind, man.
There's been some good questions?
Never mind. All right.
We discussed it. Twenty to twenty-nine.
I have a complication.
All right.
All right. Uh, any further questions? Uh, hearing none. No roll call, please.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Confused, yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Hart.
Yes. All right. We will move to, uh, ordinance second reading, uh, starting with ordinance number eight. Do I have a motion?
I'm moving to approve ordinance number eight, series two thousand twenty-four, and ordinance approving a lease and purchase option agreement for that certain real property known as eighteen fifty-six Colorado Boulevard, Idaho Springs, home rental.
Thank you, Scott. Do I have a second? Uh, second from Jeremy. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. No roll call, please.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Not confused, yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Hart.
Yes.
Thank you.
And, uh, before we move to ordinance number nine, I'd like to thank Jeremy Jones, uh, for taking over, passing the gamble law.
Where'd you get so much power? Aren't you the new guy?
I am the new guy.
Jeremy, want this thing too?
There you go. There you go. That's right. That makes it official.
Yeah.
That's okay.
I'm going to put my head down there instead.
Um, I'll actually go and make the motion myself. Uh, make a motion to approve ordinance number nine, series twenty-two-four, ordinance approving the lease and purchase option agreement for the certain real property described as Idaho Springs PT Grand Plaza, number eight forty, Idaho Springs, Colorado. Second.
Second. Any discussion?
No, this is a good thing.
I think it's a good thing, too. That's really where I'm at.
Sure.
It's kind of like it.
It's good for all of us.
Absolutely.
Uh, no discussion. Can you get a rule?
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Awesome. Just think of the mayor because he's almost been out there forty seconds.
You better whack that thing.
You gotta do it like that.
Whack it. Do it. Do it.
That might end the meeting, Tim.
I've never done it. I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask the mayor if I can do it tonight.
At the end.
Yeah, at the end.
Can you get through there?
I sure can. Can I whack the gavel at you?
You sure can.
That's all I wanted to do.
If you come to the library, I'll let you check out your own book with a little laser.
You got a stamp?
Yeah, you can step through.
All right. Uh, well, next up is, uh, city attorney, uh, Carmen, thank you for earlier and just wondering, uh, do you have anything further to share with us?
I do not, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Uh, under a city administrator, uh, we have a few, uh, items tonight. The, uh, first motion, uh, we had discussed, uh, a bit during work session. Uh, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request from the Clear Creek County Metropolitan Recreation District to permit camping at the Shelley Quinn Ballfields during the Rapid Grass Festival, August second to third, twenty-two.
Thank you, Janine. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second from, uh, I'm, I'm sorry. Did that come from Jimmy? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And, uh, any discussion? Uh, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Hart.
Yes. And the second item under city administrator, uh, is for that thousand-dollar sponsorship and, uh, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request from CCMRD for a thousand-dollar sponsorship for the, for the Rapid Grass Festival.
Thank you, Jeremy. And do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second from Scott. Any discussion? Uh, hearing none. Uh, roll call, please.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Hart.
Yes. And, uh, last up is, uh, a, uh, motion for the, uh, Easter egg hunt. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve a request from CCMRD for a one-hundred-dollar sponsorship for the free annual Easter egg hunt extravaganza that was held on March thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Uh, thank you, Lisa. And do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second from Scott. Any discussion? Uh, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Hart.
Yes. And, uh, before I move to the last one, uh, thank you, Samantha.
Thank you all. We really appreciate it.
Um, we have a, uh, fourth item and, uh, this is on the, uh, rebuild, um, for the, uh, ADA compliant, uh, ramp over at the visitor center. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion to administer a check in the amount of ten thousand dollars to be paid to Scott Wallace of Wallace Landscaping for the visitor center ADA ramp material deposits.
Thank you, Lisa. And do I have a second? Uh, second from Jeremy. Uh, any discussion?
This is actually not that much higher than the original quote we got, which was, I think, and we approved only fifteen thousand dollars?
Um, you are, you are very close and, uh, I think a year or two ago, uh, when we weren't going to have such a large scope of work, that was the, so it's not too terrible.
No, like if you look at the increase, I mean.
But you have a good memory.
Eight thousand, nine thousand and change, given the costs increases.
Well, and there's, there's some additional.
Well, there's some additional work, but just given the way that the environment has changed, I don't think that's a huge, a huge ask.
Agreed. Uh, any, uh, further, uh, comments? Uh, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Hart.
Yes. And, uh, Annie, before we move on, just wanted to make sure you didn't have anything, uh, further to share with us.
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay. And then, uh, next up, assistant city administrator, we have, uh, two requests tonight. And, uh, do I have a motion on the first one for the Brightly Software?
I make a motion to approve a proposal for Brightly Software for city work order software amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for implementation. And first year subscription to the software cloud services and professional services. It's constantly shared by all departments and taken from accounts for contractual services, fifty-one zero eight.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, second, thank you. Uh, and, uh, uh, Lisa, thank you. We're going to, uh, I, I, let me ask, do we have any, uh, any comments?
Is this, will this bring all of the work orders like into one place?
Yeah, this is a, we talked about it a little while ago. It's a cloud-based project. Essentially, but what we can do is we can right now get all our work orders digital, so guys don't check them on their phone or laptop or whatever they got. It also will allow us to eventually track them on a map, like where work orders are happening. And we can also do inventory on them. So like, for instance, we can figure out how many meters we have all the time and that kind of stuff. So we're maybe not going to like go all the way crazy with it right away, but, um, it will allow us to get these work orders going. It also, or connects to our current website that we have where we'll, we'll be able to fill out a form if you're a resident and send it like a pothole essentially, so.
That would, yeah, be very helpful.
Yeah, would. Is this the current website we have now or the one that we're moving to?
The new one. And it's like a separate software, but it's, uh, integrated.
I, the more we can put on the website, I think the better, more access for, for people that live here.
And it's infrared and they can see inside your house.
Do we have an asking on the
Yeah, that's fine, too.
Subscription after the first year or?
Yeah, I put it in my staff report. There's a attachment to it and.
Actually, several years.
Yeah, it's got like the first three. There's a little cost increase and I'm not a hundred percent sure. I'm full confidence. I'll give you the number. But it's like, I want to say it's like seven or eight thousand dollars.
Um, you are, but there, you should be confident.
Okay.
But efficiency-wise, though, it's really huge.
But we're saving labor hours, right?
Huge, huge savings, efficiency-wise, so.
Well, everyone has access to it, too. That.
Correct. Yeah. And that's cool party. Yeah, you can view and everything like almost real time, right, John?
Yes, sir.
You can almost view like real time.
You can. And like, uh,
So that's, yeah.
Yeah, it just depends on, we want to make sure all the guys can use it first. And so we're going to think it would get work orders going and then it's got a bunch of stuff you can do on top of it.
Yeah.
Same one that Gilpin County uses.
For, for the, for the money spent, it's, I, I think it's fantastic.
Do they provide the training on this?
Yeah, that's one of the reasons the initial cost is higher is because they're going to get us all the, they'll come out here and do it for us. Get all our guys where they need to be.
Yeah, I think that's awesome.
All right. Any, uh, further comments?
This is used in other, other areas, I assume.
Yeah, we, when I worked for Gilpin County, it's the same one we had there in, uh, Denver used it for a while. They don't, they have a custom thing now, but it's a pretty good solution, I think.
Yeah. Agreed.
All right. Just want to make sure we, we don't have any, uh, further comment. All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Hart.
Yes. And, uh, lastly, tonight, uh, we have one on the historic, uh, train. Uh, do I have a motion?
I want to make this one.
Sure.
I move to approve the proposal from Historic Rail Adventures for the continued restoration of Coach number seventy for two hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and twenty-six and eighty cents from historic, historic sites and facilities account, twenty-one dash sixty-one dash seventy forty-two.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second from, uh, Jimmy. And any discussion? Hearing none. Oh, I'm sorry.
As I go, you go arrange a tour to go see it, even in its unfinished state.
No, it's.
I'm not even a train junkie.
It's, it's.
Yeah, and I, I really believe that it's going to bring people to see the.
There is no doubt.
Scott, I feel the same way.
No doubt.
And like, it might get people talking about the cost, but they, I mean, there is really, really is, no pun intended, but I'll do it anyway, a movement of people that will go and see trains all over the country.
Hundred percent.
And this is the perfect town for it to be in, so.
And these are, but these both, this coach and this, um, locomotive are historic to this area.
Yeah, correct.
Specific for us.
Right, they're the odds.
There's books with, with that, the, the training, uh, you know, on and on and et cetera. The only thing I was, I was wondering when we were talking in our work session was, you know, they brought up a really cool point of our, of our deck overlooking that, but if it's covered, it's kind of a, you know.
It's a pretty high cover, though. I mean, you, you should be able to see right in from our deck almost and kind of down in.
Think so?
You might, you might be able to.
Oh, well, if, if so, that's cool.
I mean, maybe that's a consideration for our future, because the deck could be a little scary sometimes.
That deck, that deck does need to be restored at some point, so maybe there's something we can do when we do that.
Maybe it comes stairs out or something. Who knows?
Yeah. All right. Uh, any, uh, further comments? Uh, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Hart.
Yes. And, uh, Jonathan, before we move on, just want to make sure you didn't have anything further tonight?
No, I'm just going to say, we went to Durango last week to downtown Colorado Inc. Conference, the mayor and I, and we went to go visit, uh, the Durango Loop, which they have a lot of trains to, which are really cool. And, uh, got a lot of good ideas for doing some things downtown to make businesses more resilient and sustainable. So hopefully we'll be bringing some of that to the region.
Yeah, it was, uh, very educational. I will say that.
Cool.
Um, Dylan, we, uh, have your, uh, staff report. Uh, anything further to share tonight?
Nope.
All right. And, uh, Wonder, uh, thank you. Uh, for one thing, uh, the, uh, sales tax, it was down about three and a third percent. Uh, however, you will see in a brighter note, uh, we're actually still up a little bit, uh, year over year. So uh, hopefully it it stays that way. We did have uh, an economic meeting at two PM today, where we heard from many of the business leaders. Uh, everybody's down, it tends to be, uh, you know, like high, high single digit, uh, kind of. Uh, but the reduction is, is largely pointed and I think almost is unanimous. Uh, we've had some type of weather event seemingly every weekend this winter, whether it be wind or, you know, a blizzard or something, and it it just been some bad timing sometimes that plays into this. Uh, but Wonder, thank you for uh, the sales tax report and also uh, putting together uh, the uh, uh, sewer adjustment uh, on that end of the, of the water. So that, that's always very valuable, um. And then uh, tonight, I wanted to talk uh, next, uh, I wanted to have the chief comment. Uh, we have officer Johnson that was uh, involved in a, a horrible uh, loss of life incident uh, over the weekend, I don't know if council heard about the uh, full sized truck that went into the creek and there was uh, a, a boy trapped under. Uh, and uh, y- you know, with, with no uh, specialized uh, whitewater, you know, training or or any way to really stay out of the uh, the cold water, uh, there was quite a valiant attempt to save uh, that young man's life, and I'd, I'd like for a chief to uh, uh, bring us up to speed on that.
Yeah, well, I mean, first of all, I mean, it's a, you know, it's a tragedy for a family that lives in Grant County that they've lost a twelve year old. Um, I will say, uh, after taking a look at the body camera this morning, it was, um, it's one of those things that um, you know, you don't expect to have to, to have something like that happen when you're coming to work and officer John, Louis Johnson, one of our newest officers, our most, our newest officer. Um, he performed courageously, I mean, he, uh, there was some confusion about the location, so it took emergency services a little bit longer to get there. It was very close to where, where Jimmy's uh, business is. And um, so therefore, our officer was one of the first people that was on the scene, and um, so he jumped into the water and um, waist deep and uh, him and a deputy and another person will, uh, after a few minutes were able to lift the truck up miraculously, um, because this, unfortunately, this victim was underwater. Um, and so they, in trying to get the victim out, our officer, uh, he was, he got completely submerged and then even after that, they were doing CPR on the, the shoreline for a number of minutes. Um, and in freezing uh, uh, conditions. Unfortunately, the, the young man didn't survive, but um, I would just say it was a courageous effort on, on everybody that responded and I uh, extend a thanks to Jimmy and his team because they, they took the officer into the, to his building and um, gave him towels and a shower so that he, he was, he was hypothermic, so. Sad, but also um, just shows the dedication.
These guys, which you put it pretty well. So we were, um, the gentleman involved was pleading for his life and his family's life in that vehicle and these guys, and I watched it, had literally picked the vehicle themselves up. And I watched it happen and they did everything they could for that twelve year old boy.
Well, it's incredible when you think of full sized truck, and if any of you have ever waited out in the creek, you know how incredibly slippery it is, and then you're trying to lift massive amount of weight, I mean, it's, it's almost impossible.
But they they ran straight into the water with no concern themselves.
Right.
Picked it up, he did all he could, so I uh, she put it pretty, pretty light that of what these guys do. And Jeremy was there too, and um, I've been doing that for a long, long time. And for almost twenty nine years, the uh, that was one of the most horrifying things I dealt with, but.
Jimmy, coming from you, that's saying a lot.
Um, so, yeah, I uh, commend all of our first responders and the uh, the officers that they uh, they were so much that day, I mean, like underwater, um, hundred percent, they um, they could have been, you know, taken their lives taken as well, so. Um, thank you.
I think uh, before the meeting today, uh, chief put, well, you know, though, this ended uh, tragically. Uh, re- really, uh, you, you couldn't have asked for a better group to come together on, you know, a few minutes notice and uh, to give that boy a best chance that it could have had.
Yeah, for sure.
And I, I uh, I saw this over the weekend, and I'll be uh, the first to admit, I had no idea that we had an officer involved, especially where it was at, uh, because the media uh, reported it as uh, uh, the county uh, you know, being involved. So uh, just, uh, I want to thank uh, chief for bringing council up to speed, but also uh, let council know that there is a uh, letter going in uh, officer Johnson's uh, personnel file uh, regarding this uh, as well, so um.
Yeah, I think uh, we need to make sure that him and Emery are both voted for officers of the year for life saving award one and, and just all, all around, so.
Thank you.
That's my recommendation, for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, chief, anything further?
Uh, no mayor.
Uh, thank you very much, um. And uh, we will move uh, to uh, public works, uh, we do have uh, one request uh, for action, and do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve a contract for services with Environmental Designs LLC for landscape maintenance and the amount of twenty thousand, five hundred twenty six dollars on line item ten to sixty to fifty one oh eight.
Thank you Jeremy, and do I have a second? Uh, second from uh, Jimmy, and uh, any discussion? Uh, hearing none, roll call please.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Hart.
Yes. And uh, Paul, uh, got your uh, report, and I just want to make sure you didn't have anything further tonight?
Not tonight, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, and Ed, uh, good report, uh, wanted to make sure you didn't have anything further?
What's good?
All right, all right, well, thank you. Uh, no questions from you guys? Oh, any questions for Ed?
Okay.
Um, I uh, have one thing under uh, mayor council and uh, thank you Mary Jane, if you're still watching or uh, sending along uh, Mr. Anderson's connection with Anderson Park, and I was going to request uh, either John Kane uh, or Kate to read uh, the uh, the story with Mr. Anderson.
I don't know that I want to say this publicly, but I still don't see a reason why this guy has a whole park name in that room, I'm sorry, he's born here. There's millions of people that are born here.
We may need, we may need more information.
I'm just saying. I mean, I named after Andy, and he doesn't even live here, because I know this, what Andy does at least, I don't know what Harold's doing.
And, and, and you know, I, I must confess, there are things that get lost to history.
I know, and it's unfortunate.
So we'll, we'll, we'll dig into this deeper.
If we can do something and have a plaque to this guy, he says something tremendous, I'm all for it, but I like uh, Paul was telling me outside, yeah, it's Anderson Park, I was like, I've never heard that name ever.
Well, I, I want to thank Mary Jane uh, for letting us know that there's more to this, and we, we will dig into this uh, uh, further. Uh, we do not have uh, another regular meeting until uh, April twenty second, but I do want to point out, we do have a work session next week on uh, April fifteenth. And I want to make sure that uh, nobody has anything else before we adjourn?
No, we got lots of uh, jury summonses.
Yes.
Oh, 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 yes.
Oh.
Did you get thrown out?
I got thrown out, yeah.
All right.
All right. Jimmy, uh, I don't want you to get drunk with power, but I'd like for you to take us out and we're, we're gonna adjourn at seven thirty.
Wait, 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 wait.
So I, I did express, um.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
No, I did express that um, I had constituents talk to me and they wanted to ask for some more signage on central, center alley. Because particularly in the historic district, people are speeding, um, maybe if there were speed bumps, nobody kill me, Paul, mayor, nobody kill me, they were like, maybe speed bumps to keep some of the speeding down, I'm just, I'm passing along.
And Lisa, I think it's good that, that, that you're bringing forward the concern of your constituents.
Well, I have one more, and I didn't mention it, but um, I remembered it, it was, I found it in my notes, um, with the uh,